My name is Peter Eikden and I am one of the co-chairs of the Board at Midtown Phillips Neighborhood Association, and we're the ones sponsoring this event. I want to say thank you to all of you for showing up. I want to say a special thanks to the candidates for coming, and we'll be hearing from them very, very shortly. And also a big thank you to the owner of the restaurant who has donated this space to us for our use tonight. So let's hear it for that. I'm going to introduce our moderator. Let me just quickly give you a quick snapshot of what we're doing. So the Board at Midtown Phillips has created two questions which we gave to the candidates in advance. So those are the first two questions that will be asked of all the candidates. Then on your chairs, there are post-it cards, and you can ask questions from those cards. So we would ask if you have a question for the candidates, please fill those out, and when you're done, just hand it up, and one of us will come over and give it to the...our ladies over here from the League of Women's Voters who are going to sort those, and then give them to our moderator for additional questions. So each candidate will be asked the question. They'll have a certain amount of time to answer the question, and then a certain amount of time to respond. Our moderator tonight is Tane Danger. This is Tane right here. Tane is experienced in doing this, so he has moderated other forums before, so he knows what he's doing, we hope. Tane is also the co-founder and host of The Theater of Public Policy, which is Minneapolis's best, and coincidentally only, civics-inspired improv comedy company, known as T2P2 for short. The Theater of Public Policy brings hard, thinky-type issues to life onstage through unscripted improv comedy theater every Monday at Bryant Lake Bowl. So a Monday evening, yeah, it's nothing to do, it'd be a great place to hang out. So I am going to turn this over to Tane, and we are going to begin.
Yay! A big round of applause. The president, he should be sitting in one of these blue chairs, but...so, I'm very excited to be here. Thank you all very much for coming out tonight. I know there was already an announcement, but we are...the whole second half of the debate is you all and your questions, so I hope that you're coming up with lots of good, interesting questions that will help us get through the second half of this, because nobody wants to hear me ask questions for the entire time. So, yes, we do have two opening questions that were provided. I want to give the candidates a chance to provide sort of an opening statement, and you might notice there's at least one person missing. Councilmember Kano is not here. She had a scheduling conflict, and so she wasn't able to make it this evening. But that provides me an opportunity to ask...this is an opening question for each of our candidates, which is just...so you're all challenging a sitting councilperson, and you want to take her spot where she is right now, and so there's something inherent in that where you think, "Oh, she's not doing something," or "I would do something different than what she is doing right now." So as an opening statement, I'm wondering if you can introduce yourselves and tell us what would be different if you were elected and you were filling this seat starting next year? And we'll start on this end and just go right on down the line. So Gary Schiff, if you were back in this seat, what would be different starting in 2018 than it is now?
Well, thank you, everybody, for being here tonight, and I want to thank our hosts, the restaurant, and to the Neighborhood Association of Midtown Phillips for hosting this forum. I think forums like this are absolutely crucial for restoring our democracy and for empowering our people in our neighborhoods, and empowering us to help work together and find solutions to the problems that we're facing. I've lived in South Minneapolis, have been a neighborhood activist, living within three blocks of Lake Street since 1990. And over the years, I've seen a lot of changes in the Lake Street corridor, some good, some not so good. And I hate what's happening in politics in our country today. I think there's far too much division and not enough dialogue. I think that there's too many politics of distraction and not real actions that make a real difference in the lives of people in our community. I'll stay around after the forum with my partner, Chris Hewitt, and answer any questions that don't get asked today. But just to pivot to Tane's question, I think that we're in a very different place politically as a community than we were four years ago. I certainly didn't expect the outcome of this election, but...or I should speak of the presidential election. And I also didn't anticipate that the city's population would be growing as quickly as it is. We're facing our fastest population growth in 100 years, and yet we have no increase in our shelter supply for people who have a hard time finding housing. As a result, we have a 0% vacancy rate in South Minneapolis, and our homeless population has doubled. We also see an awful heroin epidemic that is ripping lives from our neighbors right out from under us. And I think this kind of public health crisis requires the skills of someone who can bring people together and work to say yes to good ideas, and to find common ground where we can restore the progress that Phillips made over the last 20 years, and bring back a quality of life that we expect every child to have, to be able to walk to school without being harassed, to be able to live in a safe, affordable apartment or home that they can afford, and to be able to see themselves with a job and a career in the future, possibly working for the city of Minneapolis or for another great industry in South Minneapolis. So I think we need to address these challenges particularly, and I think what sets me apart from the other candidates is a strong track record of working with people to bring them together to achieve real results and progress for our community, and that's my ruling again.
Mohammed Farah, please introduce yourself, and just to reiterate the question, again, if you were sitting in this council seat, what would look different? What would specifically either look different for folks in terms of voting, or policies, or interaction? So take it away.
My name's Mohammed Farah. I actually happen to live in this amazing, beautiful neighborhood. I am also an executive director for a local nonprofit that does 4-H programming throughout the Twin Cities. I have been involved in community development for over 10 years, locally and internationally. And really, the reason that I'm running is because I'm really tired of the issues that have been neglected at the City Hall. And if I were...if I was your city council member, I think a lot of things would be different, literally from black and white, from weather at the moment. And if I can do anything, the smallest thing that I can do is to build trust, is to listen to you, is to care about the issues that are concerning to you the most. My priorities are your priorities. I am about public safety. I am about economic development. I am about supporting small businesses and really bringing resources to our neighborhood. I think we have lost...there is a gap between the residents of Ward 9. Remember that we have almost 30,000 residents in this ward, one of the most diverse wards in Minneapolis. And yet, we happen to focus all the resources and all the attention happens to be other wards. There's no reason why East Lake Street should be less safe than West Lake Street. There's no reason why we can't have an open dialogue with our current city council member. No matter what scheduling issues that I have, there's no reason why I should not be here. And it's very...I'm very disappointed that our current city council member is not here before us to really have a real dialogue about the future of our great ward. And so, again, my office, if I get a chance to be a city council member, would be very much different, would have a very much look than what it has at the moment. So again, I'm here to listen to you tonight and to really build a better future for all of us. Thank you.
Roland Peterson, down at the end, please, one more time. We're wondering if you can introduce yourself and talk to us a little bit about what looks, feels, is different if you're the city council member for Ward 9.
First of all, I want to say I'm a veteran, single parent, former Sunday School teacher, volunteer, retired. I got time to do this. What I would do different, you would not see me doing what Kano has done during her time. You would not see me doxing information. If anyone doesn't know what that means, it's releasing all your information online, okay? You would not see me leading protesters. All that's doing is feeding the media. They love seeing that. You wouldn't see me doing that. You see her doing that, you would not see me doing that. You would not see me under an ethics review committee. Yeah, there's a lot of things that need to be changed. I think the city's funding needs to be diverted in other ways. 60% of the budget used to come from downtown. Now it's reversed, where 60% of the budget comes from your taxpayers. We've seen Macy's leave downtown. And so our property tax keeps going up and up. And the city just needs to learn to live within their means.
So, number one, and why don't we start sort of on the other end and work our way back this way a little bit? So in what way do you believe neighborhoods increase the capacity of your office? So in what way do you believe neighborhoods increase the capacity? And by your office, I'm assuming, we're presuming office if you were elected as a city councilperson. So Mr. Peterson?
You know, I think I do like John Quincy does. He has a forum every month where he sits down and talks to his constituents. He has a cup of coffee where he ranges, things like that. I'd like to reach out to the community better, see what they want, see what they're doing, see what's happening.
Neighborhoods would be vital to everything that I do, all the neighborhoods across Ward 9. Every neighborhood would be...would serve to be my eyes and ears when it comes to issues, when it comes to decision-making. Right now, the issue that we have with our current city council member is that there is a gap between the neighborhood and this particular office. We can't even have a clear dialogue with our current city council member. We tend to make decisions without residents, without listening to neighborhoods. I would definitely would have a continuing dialogue. I would have monthly meetings. I would return your calls, your emails, in less than 24 hours. And so everything that I do will be based on the needs and the ones of the nine precincts that we have in Ward 9.
So obviously, Councilmember Kano is not here tonight, which we've discussed, but when you say there have been decisions made without the neighborhood, can you point us to a specific one of those, or an example that really sticks out that you want to highlight as an example of something where you feel like it wasn't done the way that you would do it if you had been in office there?
Well, if you look at the current city council member, you know, there are a lot of issues that is concerned...that is concerning to her that's outside of the ward. You know, we had elected a city council member to tackle the issues right here within Ward 9, and she seems to be focusing on issues outside of the ward. Yes, there are still issues, but the number-one issues that need to be dealt at this particular level of government should be within Ward 9.
So just...it'll be loud applauding if you applaud right into the microphone every time. So just...but I just want to try and press for a specific of...I mean, that's very broad. There's a lot of things that are inside and outside the ward. So can you just give us something to really wrap our hands around, as far as something where you say, "She's focused on this, I would not have, or I would do it differently"?
Well, there's...I mean, there's a lot of field trips that, you know, trips that she took outside of the ward that, you know, not a lot of people are not happy about.
So are you saying, then, you wouldn't take those?
I would not take any trips while I am a city council member without the neighborhood not being aware of it. That would be my top priority. If I am elected, every issue that I tackle will be the issues that all the residents care about within Ward 9. I would not tackle any...and that, yes, there are national issues out there, such as immigration, such as the Dakota issue, and that is still closer to my heart, but at the same time, I would consult with the residents of Ward 9, what is priority to them, and that should be my priority.
Okay. I gotta keep going down the line, so I'll reiterate this question one more time, Mr. Schiff. So in what way do you believe neighborhoods increase the capacity of your office?
I've done a lot of organizing in my life around issues and behind causes, from 25 years in the fight against HIV and AIDS to work against homelessness. It wasn't until I joined the Powderheart Neighborhood Association and joined the Board and became a block club leader on Bloomington Avenue, that I began to see the power of neighborhoods as the table that brings everyone together for something that we all have in common that unites us. We all live in this neighborhood. We all care about the safety of this neighborhood. We all care about the well-being of our neighbors. We all want our children to grow up in a better community. And I found that absolutely to be the best demonstration of coalition politics that I could ever find. And to me, that's more powerful than identity politics. It's more powerful than any other issue, single-issue organizing, because it requires listening to people who've been there before you. It requires compromising on what you want to achieve, and it also means that you're able to share the resources and share the efforts. So for me, neighborhood organizations are essential with providing a vision and being a table for where people come up with the vision for the future. I believe that neighborhoods help increase the capacity of city council members by advising on the land use planning specifically for future growth in the community. And I think there are also the eyes and the ears on the ground for emerging issues, whether that's a slumlord, whether that's a dangerous drug on the street, or whether that's a new homeless camp. And so to me, neighborhood organizations are absolutely essential for the success of a council member.
Well, that is a great segue into the second pre-formulated question which we have, which I'll start with you, Mohammed, here in the middle. So what do you believe the future of neighborhoods should be after the CPP funding ends in 2019? So just as a little bit...just a little bit of background, the way that neighborhood organizations are being funded is technically sunsetting in 2019, and so the city's in the midst of a conversation of what will happen after that? Will we continue sort of trying to fund it the way we have? Will it look different? Will the relationship between neighborhood organizations and the city change? So to that question, I'll say it one more time. What do you believe the future of neighborhood organizations should be after 2019?
Very good question. So I happen to work for a nonprofit that does amazing work locally, and a lot of these neighborhoods happen to be like functioning a nonprofit. And the small amount of money that they get happens to come from the city. And so if I was elected to be a city council, your next city's council member, I definitely would renew that funding, because again, yes, there are a lot of entities that happen to have diversity in terms of their funding, but there are a lot of them that actually...all the funding that they get happens to be this particular...from this particular funding from the city. And so it's vital that these neighborhoods continue to function, because their success is my success. As much as they're moving along in educating residents, the more they educate residents, the more that they are assisting residents, you know, that should be my priority. And so everything that I will do moving forward, if elected, I will do everything that I can to enhance some of these neighborhood associations and continue the funding and help renew their funding.
So funding continues. Is there anything about the way that they're structured or the relationship that they have with the city that you would look to grow, enhance, change, modify? Is there any element of it, or is it just sort of steady as she goes?
No. One of the things that I would do actually is focus on the entities that don't have...that I would do everything that I can to diversify their funding. I happen to, again, have a lot of connections outside of the Twin Cities. There are a lot of corporations who care about the same issues that some of these neighborhood associations care about. So I would definitely bring in potential resources from the philanthropy world and the corporation world to better diversify their funding across Ward 9.
Okay, great. Same question. Gary Schiff, what would you...what do you believe the future of neighborhood organizations is post-2019?
Sure. Well, 2019 is when the current funding arrangement expires, and it's a very complicated circle of funding that we owe some credit to Tony Scallon, who's in the audience tonight, who founded Neighborhood Revitalization Program by first coming up with the idea that downtown growth should benefit neighborhoods, and that the property taxes from downtown projects like City Center should go directly into funding neighborhood organizations, a table, space, a building, where neighbors can get together and find common ground and address problems. Now, that funding is going to go away in its current form, because the TIF districts will expire, but I'm absolutely committed to making sure that the same funding that neighborhood organizations receive today continues to be received by neighborhood organizations directly through the general fund of the city of Minneapolis. And I also like the current Neighborhood Community Engagement Commission arrangement as a way of advising city council members. So I want to keep NCDC as well and make sure that they continue to define the program outlines for neighborhood organizations. I think the success for neighborhood organizations comes from the planning, is from the grassroots up, and not when mandates are forced by City Hall. So I want to keep pretty much everything we see today, except for improvements and ideas that neighborhood organizations have themselves about ways to increase capacity and increase the sustainability of their funding.
I just wanted to add that I think the park system could be more utilized. I know we put a lot of money into the parks, and I think it could be more utilized, more There used to be a group called Powderhead Community Council, where they buy up houses and build up new houses, and then they'd turn and sell them to low-income people. That was a good program. That's what needs to be implemented, what I feel.
All right. So just to sort of put a button on this last piece, wait, wait.
Wait. Where's Andre O'Connell? Isn't there a fourth person that could ask you this question?
Yes.
Yeah, she chickened out.
Well, she had a scheduling conflict. We spent the...you missed it. If that was what you were here for, we spent the whole first 10 minutes on that. So we'll...
So Ms. O'Connell spent my time that was wasted and everyone else's, why she couldn't beat her? And these three candidates that want to represent our ward are here, they're representing themselves, and Ms. O'Connell is not.
Yes. This is...you have accurately stated where we are at the moment. Good. So I just want to put a button back on this. So in terms of neighborhood organizations, are you saying pretty much steady as she goes stays similar, or is there anything you're looking at changing if you were in the council seat going into 2019?
It would take a lot of research and looking into a lot of programs, but yeah. I mean, we've got to continue building the city. There's no...it has to build.
Okay. Great. I want to follow up on a piece that we were getting at in the beginning part, because I think all three of you mentioned elements of public safety, and I'll actually go to Ms. Farah first. You said, you know, "I'm about public safety." What does that mean, I guess? You know, I think everybody would say we're pro-public safety. So again, kind of going back to my original framing, what's different if you're a council member in terms of public safety?
So very, very important question for me, because again, I happen to live in this neighborhood, and one of our top priorities is public safety issues, which is an issue that has been neglected by our current city council member. So when we talk about public safety, to me, it's actually an issue that everybody needs to be involved. Right now, if you look at the relationship between the residents of Ward 9 and the police department, there seems to be us-against-them mentality. And what our current city council member have done is only help build that gap between the residents and the police department. One of the things that we need to realize is that, you know, all this...the issue of public safety starts with trust and relationship between the residents and the police department. That has to happen. So for me, the first thing that I'm going to be doing is build that trust back and build that trust between the police department and the people of Ward 9. And then beyond that, I would definitely focus on training. The other thing that I would focus on is to let people know that we're not going to arrest our way out from some of these issues that we have before us. We have drugs issues. We have prostitution issues. So one of the things that I'm going to be helping is bring in programs and create pathways for offenders to get from their current status pathway to more of a better path. And so that is something that I would definitely do different from our current city council member.
I want to follow up on the rebuilding trust. I have moderated a few of these, and it's a thing that I hear everybody talk about a lot, rebuilding trust between the community and the police department. I always want to go back to the how. Like, what are things that you have the levers to do as a member of the city council? Is it policy changes? Is it training changes? Give us a sense of the actual thing that you do.
It's multiple things that I would...that I would definitely would focus on. Over the past 10 years that I've actually been...have been working in the community, I happened...one of the things that I focused on was actually build trust between the law enforcement from local level all the way to the federal and various different communities locally and internationally. So right now, there is a huge gap between the residents of Ward 9 and the police department. There's a fear on both sides. So we have to come together in a room and have that continuing dialogue before we even discuss the next step. And so for me, is having more dialogue and building that trust and diversifying the police department so that it looks like the people that it's serving.
That is a really good point, but I want to come back this way and give Gary Schiff a chance. So again, on this public safety question, what looks different if Gary Schiff is the council member for Ward 9 than if our current council member is?
Sure. Well, I think there's nothing more fundamental than the right to be safe, safe in your own home or safe in your community. And I approach this work from my experience working with victims of crime. And that gives me a unique perspective on the rights that crime victims have, the right to be heard, the right to find out the status of their investigation, the right to address an offender and to have a restorative justice process to help healing. I think our current status with police-community relations is a very painful, very painful conversation that the whole city is engaged in. I know as a white person, I will not be treated the same as someone else who doesn't look like me by the police. And I also know that to address this issue, we need systemic reform of our police department. We need absolute structural change to the police department. As city council member, I would have so many people come to me with concerns about something an officer said, or perhaps an officer not showing up in a reasonable period of time. And because of the city charter, our police chief reports only to the mayor. And I had the experience of working with council member Cam Gordon on rewriting our use-of-force procedures when tasers were rolled out to all officers in the department, only to have the police chief and the mayor at that time throw away those policies and adopt their own. So to address this, I think we need to change and follow an example from the city of San Jose. They created an Office of Independent Police Auditor, who is separate from the chain of command, who oversees all training, all service policies, all use-of-force policies, all recruitment, including psychological training. And those policies are adopted by the policymakers. the policymakers. So I would keep the chain of command under the mayor, but create an office of independent police auditor that reports to the city council to make sure that the policies that guide our police officers reflect our values. And it's worked so well in San Jose that the mayor of Chicago just hired their auditor to clean up the Chicago P D. If they can do it, we can do it.
If the chain of command remains the same, what power does the auditor need then in order to actually enforce something like that? We just saw today, there was a report that body cameras maybe aren't being used to the extent that we want. If the auditor came back to the city council and said, "Oh, I'm finding these things are wrong," what happens then in this situation?
That's a great example. So, what's different is, and let's remember how we got here. Four years ago, I stood before the city council after going to Rialto, California, and said, "We need body cams here in Minneapolis, and I'm going to work with my colleagues to find the money to put it in our budget in order to make it happen." The cameras were purchased, but it took three years for them to start being used. And now we find they're not even being turned on. So, what didn't happen was a policy adopted by the policymakers saying the camera must be turned on. That sounds simple, but it never happened. And what happens today is only the mayor and the police chief discuss these policies. While the auditor is correctly pointing out that their cameras aren't being used, the auditor should then bring forward model policies used in Rialto, California, and other cities across the country about when cameras should be turned on and what is the discipline when an officer doesn't. In Rialto, they do spot checks on body cams for cops. They pull up tapes. They see if they're being used. And they do proactive auditing. They do proactive enforcement of their policies. And that's what's not happening today in Minneapolis.
Okay, I want to come down to the end. Roland Peterson, this question of public safety, what, again, thinking about the policies and how the city council interacts with the Minneapolis Police Department and with the community, looks different if you're a city council person?
Would not be harassing the police chief like O'Connell has. Let him alone. Let him do his job. The mayor connects with the police chief, but she shouldn't be involved in seeing who is hired and who not is hired. That should be left up to police academy and the police academy only. We've seen some really, really unfortunate things happen. And it was the mayor's choice. I think we all know that. It may be under the carpet or behind the curtain, but it was the mayor's choice. And
Can I just add, what was the mayor's choice?
By hiring this individual that shot this gal.
Are you, you're talking about the shooting of Justine, and so you're saying that the mayor personally hired that police officer?
She personally came down and congratulated him. When they're on the gun range, when they're on the gun range, this guy stood at the other end of the gun range, and all the other officers were at one end. They knew he was a loose cannon. They didn't want to hire him, but she, yeah, we all know what happened.
That is quite a charge. So I want to give both Mohammed and Gary a chance to respond to this because we both heard there that the mayor should be left completely in charge of this, and there should be less of a role for the city council, and that the mayor personally was responsible in some way for the officer involved with the shooting of Justine. So, whichever part of that you both want to pick up, either one of you wants to pick up first.
Yeah, first of all, I don't think you're educated enough about the issue that just when that just happened. I don't think that's how the mayor, I don't think you're educated enough about the issue. However, I think mistakes happen, and I think what we need to do is learn from that mistake so that it doesn't happen, so that we don't accuse anything on anybody. You know, because of the lack of education, we tend to say things out of hand. And so, definitely, you know, definitely what we need to do is, you know, learn from our mistakes and make sure that our police officers are trained to the best that they can.
So we brought, Mr. Schiff, you brought up the issue of heroin and overdoses in the ward. And we actually have an audience question on this, so I'll just read this. These are, by the way, all being organized for us by the League of Women Voters, so big thank you to them. Yes, big round of applause to the League of Women Voters. So, the presence of heroin in Ward 9 is mentioned often. Some have linked heroin to homelessness. I think this is vagrancy, crime. How would you address the opioid, I think this is, this last word is crisis, situation in the ward? And so, since you brought that up first, Mr. Schiff, I'll start with you.
Sure. Well, this is the issue that I perhaps spend the most time talking to people about in this campaign. I made ending the heroin epidemic my number-one campaign issue when I launched this campaign in January. And as I talk to people, they simply say, "My daughter," "my son," or they talk about their neighbor. And so, we have to think about how we got here and how we get from here. Three years ago, the federal government made it more difficult for people to get access to pills that were being over-prescribed and pushed by corporate drug America. And when the restraints on access to pills was put in place, street heroin became the replacement. So, we're dealing with an epidemic that was created by corporate drug companies, and it's devastating particularly to the Native American community in Phillips. We need to address it as a public health crisis. We need to deploy public health strategies that are being used in other cities right now. We need to create safe-use facilities. We need culturally appropriate needle exchange programs. We need paths to treatment that meet people where they are and help them on their journey close to the community, rather than criminalizing people, sending them to jail for 48 hours and then having them back out in the streets. This epidemic is challenging our entire treatment system like never before. It's exposing the gaps that we have right now between the community and with our healthcare system and with our treatment programs. And I want to deploy a public health strategy. 25 years ago, it wasn't the federal government that took the lead on the fight against AIDS. It was the New York City Public Health Department. It was the San Francisco City Public Health Department. Where is the Minneapolis Health Department? I will make sure if elected that the Minneapolis Health Department shows up at Little Earth and we get to work on day one.
So, I want to, the piece of that, I think that there's a lot in there for a lot of folks to agree on, is part of this, though, then, decriminalizing isn't the right word, but not potentially charging people in these situations where they are using or they're found in these cases? If you're talking about moving it from a crime issue to a public health issue, is there a different enforcement mechanism then?
Well, in the concept of a safe-use facility, let me explain that. If people aren't familiar, a safe-use facility is where someone can go and inject drugs under a medical environment, and they can also get access to Narcan if an overdose presents. They can get access to clean needles, which reduces HIV and hepatitis C transmissions, and they can learn about treatment options in a nonjudgmental, shame-free environment. A local logical partner would be HCMC in this endeavor. And so, when you have people in safe-use facilities, as California is exploring, as Seattle is exploring, you don't send in the cops and arrest everyone because that doesn't get someone into treatment and it doesn't help somebody with the addictions in their lives.
So let me ask the other two kids. We can start with you, Mr. Farah. Everything that Gary just said, talked about there in terms of safe-use facilities, changing it to a public health focus, you're the same, on board? Do it differently? Disagree? Help us figure out where the differences are.
Well, first of all, I think we have to understand that this is not only a Ward 9 issue. It's not only a city issue, but it's a national issue. And we're not going to arrest our way out from this particular issue. I do see this as a health issue, and one of the things that I am really interested in doing moving forward if elected is that we need to create programs for these individuals. Because right now, what's happening is we're picking them up, they're coming back. We're picking them up, they're coming back. We need to bring partners to the table. We need to bring the county workers. We need to bring health workers. We need to bring the nonprofits. We need to create a partnership between the city, the county, nonprofit, health workers to address this particular issue. Because the issue of, the solution of picking people up, coming back, it has not worked, right? And so, we need to think other ways to tackle this issue. And for me, it's about partnership, and it's about creating a pathway for these individuals so that they don't come back to our neighborhoods.
So, I want to try and press on the specifics, though, because Mr. Schiff gave us several specifics. I'm wondering, idea of city-provided clean needles, safe-use facilities, yes or no to either of those?
Yes. And again, I am also interested in bringing real partners to the table as soon as I'm elected to tackle this issue. I'm not going to look at this from a law enforcement standpoint. I'm going to look at this from a health standpoint and bring real partners to tackle this issue.
Okay. And I'll come down there. We've got a lot out on the table right now, Mr. Peterson, so I want to ask the same general question. How would you start working on this question of heroin epidemic in Ward 9?
First of all, I'd like to say I like what Gary said and work with the Department of Health, Minnesota Department of Health. They've got to have all the ins and outs and plan a strategy to help people. I mean, it's not really a criminal or crime thing. It's a health issue. It just comes down to health issues. And it can be done. It can be done. It can't be done easily.
And so, to that end, would you then, are we still on board with the idea of safe-use facilities, clean needle exchanges facilitated by the city?
Boy, that's a tough issue. I'm
That's why you're running. That's why we're asking you.
That's a tough issue. Which side should I be on? Which side?
It's your call.
Yeah, we have to pick, we have to pick between you all already. So you have to tell us where you come down on this.
No needles, but I'd like to have more hospitals hooked up so you can walk into a hospital, get the help you need without question.
Okay. I got this question. This is another audience question, and I actually had somebody ask this before, that asked this before the forum as well. So it seems like it's something a lot of people are thinking about. So what is your position on the public works expansion in the East Phillips neighborhood? And forgive me if I, I want to make sure that I'm getting this right. This is the water, the water municipal water yard? Is this the same one? I'm all on the same page with this, near 28th and Hiawatha? So, where do you fall on that issue? I believe at this point, the city has moved forward with it, but our current council member has, was originally opposed to it being there. So, you all get sort of the benefit of the fact that it's already happening, but I'm just wondering, did you oppose it at any point? Do you think that it's a good thing for the community? And what would you want to see moving forward with this public works project in East Phillips? And I'll start down at the end, Mr. Peterson.
Boy, I wish I knew more about it. I'm one of these green people. Everyone needs clean water, but I don't even know what this project's all about, to be honest. Totally in the dark. Sorry.
All right. Well, we'll come down this way, and maybe you'll find an answer by the time we get through our other two candidates. So, Mr. Farah?
Actually, I need to get back on that issue as well.
Okay. So, and we'll try, Mr. Schiff, just for a third swing.
Sure. I think there's an incredible opportunity with so many city jobs in Phillips that is so close to our neighborhoods, and yet the city doesn't employ enough people who grow up in Phillips. And we have an opportunity to create pathways for careers in the field of public works. The men and women who deliver the clean drinking water that we all use deserve quality offices and workspace. I think it's moving forward, and if it does, I think what we need to do is recognize the opportunity of making this a gateway to the trades, a way for children who grow up in Phillips to see people who are working blue-collar, living wage, government jobs with full healthcare benefits just less than a mile from their house. What an incredible opportunity to show people the careers that are possible. And so I think we should link with job training programs, and very similar to the Opportunity Center that council member Abdi Warsameh has opened in Cedar Riverside, I think if this project moves forward, we should have a strong job training component that sees city jobs as one of the best ways that we can break the cycle of poverty in Phillips.
Okay. We'll move on, and we actually have a whole batch of issues that we could touch on, but this is a very good entry point, another audience question, which was, how will you represent the concerns of Lake Street businesses? As we started talking at the very beginning about the diversity of the businesses that are on Lake Street and the unique concerns toward 9, but this is a larger city issue with a lot of what the city council has done over the last term. So, I'll start in the middle. Mr. Farah, how would you represent the concerns of Lake Street businesses?
So, over the past 12 months or so, I've had a lot of discussions with a lot of business owners, and there seems to be, you know, there's a gap between the business owners and our current city council member. And because of that, there, there's a lack of support for them when it comes to the licensing department, when it comes to resources. And so, one of the things that I'm going to do as soon as I'm elected is, again, how do we enhance our current local businesses within Ward 9, but also how do we bring in more businesses to Ward 9? There are a lot of different potential locations within Ward 9 that are utilized or underutilized that where we're able, there are a lot of businesses that are interested coming into Ward 9. We need to create a platform of discussion for potential resources. Not only that, we need to listen to our current business owners and look at the process, for example, the licensing. We need to, I believe that we need to revamp that whole system because it's just hectic for small business to initiate within Ward 9, if you're looking to that. And so, one of the things, again, I'm going to do is, how do we revamp the process of getting any license from the, from within the city of Minneapolis, and also making sure that, you know, that we are enhancing the microloans within the city, and how do we bring more resources to the people, to the business owners of Ward 9?
As a follow-up to that, everybody wants to bring more businesses into their, probably most people do, want to bring more businesses into their ward and their neighborhood. How do you do it? What are the levers that you have as a city council person to try and make some of that happen?
Well, right now, as a matter of fact, this is a fact, I haven't seen any businesses that the city council member Kano has brought to Ward 9. I have seen a lot of evidences, actually, where she tried to stop getting a business into Ward 9. I'll give you an example. A block away from here, there was a gentleman that tried to purchase Verde Plaza Building. And as soon as he did, as soon as he tried to purchase that building, the first person that obviously you want to go to is a city council member from that area. And she was the only person that actually tried to stop that individual purchasing that building. He had a lot of ideas, bringing more businesses into that building, and he ended up actually having other city council members fighting for him in order to get that building purchased. And so, at the end of the day, he did purchase that building without Kano.
And so, you're saying if you were council member, you would have
I would have created a platform where we are bringing more businesses to the ward in any industry, from the health industry to the IT, to the IT industry. There are a lot of potential ways of resources for our ward. But right now, what's missing is that platform. 30,000 residents in Ward 9. This is an asset. These are customers for potential folks. We're not having that discussion right now.
Mr. Schiff, I'll come back this way. How would you work with, represent businesses along Lake Street as council member?
Sure. I would be present at Lake Street council meetings and engage with small business owners on the agenda of a safe, multimodal Lake Street that works for everybody. I would address public safety concerns head-on. I would address the resurgence of street prostitution that has come to the area in the last couple of years. And, you know, sometimes the most effective thing that government can do is get out of the way. Our city's regulatory code was last comprehensively rewritten in 1962. And as my friend Mohammed has said, there are so many overlapping jurisdictions within city departments. You literally could go to one employee in the health department, another employee in economic development, another department in the tax division, and on and on and on, and you end up with seven different answers. We need to make sure that we organize city workers Uh, we need to make sure that we organize city workers around the goal of helping businesses, helping them attract employees, helping them stay open and, uh, not be afraid to get rid of outdated regulations. Like, uh, when I authored the code to get rid of the law that says you can't make beer in Minneapolis anymore. Uh, that was on the books since prohibition. Took it off the books with a three-worded, uh, change to code and today we have over 22 micro breweries open in Minneapolis.
Uh, there's a, there's more regulatory pieces to pick up on, but I want to give Mr. Peterson a chance. Representing, uh, businesses on Lake Street, how would you approach that?
Well, you know, I certainly would talk to them and discuss anything that the city may be perhaps hurting them, making them, making it harder for them. Uh, yeah, we talked about regulations, we talked about rules and a lot of businesses, they need to run their own business and keep the government out of it. Uh, of course, there's regulations for safety issues, of course.
Are there specific regulations, uh, Mr. Peterson, that you think that the city should do away with that you've seen right now?
Gosh, good question. No, I can't answer that right now. I don't know.
Okay. Uh, well, let me, yep.
No, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, well, let me come, so, um, maybe we could even do this sort of as a lightning round. The city, uh, did pass just recently, uh, a plan to move towards $15 minimum wage in the next two years. Do all three of you support that? Uh, support that move for a $15 minimum wage? Yes?
Yes, I do.
Yes?
No.
No? Uh, so if you were a city council person, would you be trying to reverse that?
If it can be. It's failing in Seattle. The average person out there that works for minimum wage, their salary is down 1,500, 2,000 annually. It's failing. You're going to lose restaurant service, you're going to lose restaurant workers, you're going to end up walking up to a table and ordering your own, bringing your own plate to your table.
So since both.
I've spoken to a lot of chain restaurant managers. Their quote was they would leave.
So, Mr. Schiff, uh, you said yes, you're in favor of it. Um, do you want to respond to some of those criticisms then of a $15 minimum wage?
Well, I think we need more nuance in the law and I think, when I think of Mercado Central or I think of global market, I think of micro entrepreneurs. Uh, micro entrepreneurs have five or fewer employees, most likely to be family members. I absolutely want to exempt micro entrepreneurs from the $15 minimum wage law in order to help entrepreneurs in our city and to help the small family businesses survive. Uh, we give loans to hundreds of businesses up and down Lake Street. Uh, I certainly hope the city has already started to renegotiate the terms of those loans since there's going to be new demands on wages in the next couple of years. And if it hasn't started already, I'll start that work in January.
Uh, one other big one that's, uh, actually on the agenda coming forward is a potential fair scheduling rule, uh, rule that the city is looking at. And just as a tiny bit of background, there's different ways that a fair scheduling, uh, piece could happen, but the premise, uh, as it's usually debated, is that there would be rules that the city of Minneapolis would put in place that say that a business like a, a restaurant has to give people a certain amount of notice when they're scheduled. So the business manager can't just call them and say, I need you here, uh, tomorrow morning at 6:00 AM. And that you wouldn't be able to do things like schedule someone to close the business at midnight and then open it again the next morning at 6:00 AM. I'm wondering how you all think about, uh, the idea generally of the city getting into the business of trying to create an ordinance around fair scheduling? Uh, if it's something that you could support, you do support, absolutely don't support, somewhere in the middle? Um, I'll start with you, Mr. Farah.
Yeah. One of the things that I really don't like to see at the city hall is just because Seattle, Washington, or Denver, city council members decided to do one thing, you know, all of a sudden, we're going to do it in Minneapolis. One of the things that, you know, I don't like to make decisions that quick, uh, just because it's good for one area doesn't mean it's good for another area. One of the things that I'm interested is when we're making such ordinances or any law, we need to bring the right stakeholders to the table. We need to bring employers, we need to bring business owners, we need to bring as many residents, as many people as possible to help make that decision. A city council member cannot make every decision. So my decision will be based on the decision of those stakeholders. Uh, while I want to protect employees, but I also want to protect businesses as well. So the question, the, the, the question is how do we, how do we come together to, to make a better decision on both ends? And so that is, that is the way that I would really solve some of these issues, is really having this discussion from both ends while protecting everyone.
So is the answer there, you're open to, uh, fair scheduling? You just, you want to talk about it more?
I am open to it, but I also want to hear the concerns from every side.
And so what, uh, uh, you want to hear the concerns? Is there anything then you're looking for that would help you make up your mind one way or the other? I, I'm just trying to, if folks are here thinking about, uh, they're trying to choose between you all, uh, what is it that they can point to you that you're the candidate who would?
I am in, in favor as a matter of fact, but at the same time, I want to hear the concerns. Just because I like it doesn't mean that a lot of people are going to like it.
Okay.
That, that may change depending on, otherwise, you know, I'll, I'll be like the current city council member and make any decisions without, without them.
All right. Uh, we'll, we'll move down to, uh, Mr. Peterson, uh, fair scheduling rule?
No. Let the city council stay out of any business they're trying to run. They hire people, here's your schedule, here's what you're required to do. Why does should a city council even get involved with it? It's ridiculous.
All right. And Mr. Schiff?
I think when you are hired in a job, there, you have a few expectations, uh, like the number of hours you'll be working each week, uh, the number of hours off that you get in between shifts. Uh, I think that's very reasonable, uh, to protect workers, particularly workers with young children and families. Uh, we can see, uh, the effect of what happens when there's not enough family time in the home. And, uh, I, I, I want to protect, uh, the relationship and the time that, uh, parents have with their kids. But at the same time, we all know, uh, if it starts raining, uh, you don't expect the rooftop patio to be open. So I, I'm, I'm not going to be in favor of a law that's going to say, two weeks from now, you're guaranteed a shift to work the patio rooftop, uh, and then it starts raining and the restaurant owner has, uh, no customers and too many staff. So, uh, I, I want to support the rights of protecting workers without, uh, mandating that you have to staff, uh, a sidewalk patio on a rainy day.
Uh, great. Let's, uh, let's move on. This is a very long question, so I might just, uh, try and get to, uh, the, the actual question part of it toward the end, but, uh, generally, it starts, my, my block club along 35W quarter has been plagued by panhandlers, uh, and there's a variety of ways the panhandlers have, uh, been, been causing problems, they write about. Um, I don't want a stranger approaching my car window after dark. Although panhandling is legal, many municipalities have passed ordinances banning it at intersections and after dark. Would you introduce and support such legislation in Minneapolis? I'll start with Mr. Peterson down on the end.
Boy, I think the police have enough to do without worrying about panhandlers. I really do. I mean, what's, what's the number ratio for, for police per, how many people there are in the city? And then they got to focus on panhandlers? No. Uh, yeah, it's a nuisance. It's, it's a blight and doesn't look good in the city, of course. But enforcing laws, there's a lot of laws that policemen don't enforce. And I, I can't see, I can't see the ban.
All right. Uh, we'll, we'll come straight down the line. Uh, Mohammed?
Yeah, same here as well.
Same?
Yes.
Not in favor of, uh, introducing or supporting a, a ban on panhandlers at particular times?
Yes.
Uh, Gary Schiff?
Uh, we have a law on the books, uh, to address that issue. It's unenforceable, uh, because panhandling has generally been defended by the courts as a right of free speech. Uh, the law that is currently on the books was authored by council member Ralph Remington and it gave enhanced penalties and prohibited panhandling near intersections and near crosswalks. And it is unenforceable. So I think we have to get to the root of the issue and, uh, I've seen the homeless camps along 35W. They're filled with heroin needles. Uh, I've seen the growing homeless camps throughout South Minneapolis and along the Midtown Greenway. We have to address homelessness in our community by expanding shelter options. That's number one. Number two, we have to approach our heroin epidemic as a public health crisis. Uh, and we have to create same-day work opportunities as well. One of the crucial ways to get someone out of homelessness is to be able to say, if you want to come right now, we have a job for you. City Minneapolis, the park board hires hundreds of seasonal workers. We could do the same thing here in Minneapolis and allow people a way to restore, uh, their self-worth, to feel that they have an opportunity to contribute and to say, if you want to come right now, we can put you to work shoveling, we can put you to work, uh, in a park and at lunchtime, you'll meet with a social worker who can help you with finding stable housing. That's what other cities are doing. Minneapolis needs to do this too.
We have a, we have a mayoral candidate, Jacob Bry, who, uh, as part of his campaign is talking about, uh, eliminating homelessness in the city of Minneapolis. I'm wondering if you think that that is a realistic goal and how you would, uh, work towards that if you do, uh, as a city council person? Is eliminating homelessness in Minneapolis something that's doable, uh, within, you know, a, a term or two of a city council? And I'll start back with you, Mr. Schiff.
Absolutely. Uh, when Hennepin County did a count in 2015, Hennepin County sends people out under the bridges to the hospital rooms along the river and they do a count every quarter of how many homeless people there were. In 2015, there were 215 people living without shelter in our community. The last time they did a count, it was at over 400. And the next month, Hennepin County closed 120-bed shelter. Hennepin County has already announced that they intend to open less shelter spaces this winter than last winter. And today we see on the front pages of the paper, city council fighting, fighting over federal dollars that are available for necessary homeless shelters, uh, and fighting over how to allocate these dollars. I think it's time to sit down again with the county and right away, open up 400 new spaces for people to be able to find shelter in our community. And they can't all be downtown. What I want to do is put together a coalition of council members who will agree to support a 50-bed homeless shelter in their district so that we can be part of the solution. City of Washington DC has created hundreds of new homeless shelters and they've spaced them out all at once throughout the city, right next door to condominiums, right next door to major employers, and it works. Uh, this is, I think, uh, one of the most important things we need to do to protect, uh, what it means to be a loving and a caring community. In, uh, many areas of this country, people defend the right to camp outdoors, but in our community, uh, these are people who don't wish to be camping and winter is coming and, uh, it shouldn't be a death sentence when you don't have shelter.
Uh, points for Game of Thrones reference, but where, um, do, is there somewhere in Ward Nine you think about for a potential homeless shelter if we're going to build new ones across the city?
Uh, I have no particular real estate picked out in the back of my head. That's where the neighborhoods get together and start helping with, uh, providing opportunities and ideas.
Okay.
So I'll work with others, but I absolutely will work with, uh, other neighborhoods and other neighborhood leaders to say, Ward Nine will do its share.
Uh, same question. I'll go, uh, down the line. Uh, ending homelessness in Minneapolis, a reasonable, uh, goal for the city to focus on? Uh, and if so, to what end would you, would you feel is your responsibility to make that happen? Or what would you do perhaps?
Yes. So in my world, uh, nothing is impossible. I think that is definitely a possibility. Um, it'll take some time, but I think that there is a possibility to make that happen, to meet that goal. And, um, I think a city council member is a, a, a part of the solution. I think we need to make sure that not only the mayor, the city council members, uh, we need to get the county involved, we need to get the state involved, we need to get federal officials and agencies involved, and also nonprofits as well. Uh, you have to create a coalition outside of the city, uh, hall to tackle this issue, but I think it's definitely a possibility and I think it's worth, uh, tackling, definitely.
Definitely worth tackling. All right. And, and rounding out the order, uh, Mr. Peterson?
Boy, what the numbers Gary just, just spoke about, that just, that just floors me. I mean, here's a city of Minneapolis, a lot of money floating around, and why should we have throwaway people? We got to care for these people. Mary Jo Copeland down there, she does a heck of a job. I mean, she's a saint. She should be applauded every day and night for the work she's done. Yeah, we, we, this homeless, there's a lot of amount of health involved with these people, a lot. And, uh, yeah, they got to be cared for. We just can't have throwaway people. That's just wrong.
Okay. Um, I got another question, which hopefully will start us into the realm of talking a little more about housing, which we've talked about now in terms of, uh, a little bit in terms of, uh, affordable housing and homelessness, but this is a question very specifically about rental housing. And, uh, somebody told me the, the ward is 70% renters. Is that approximately correct? Somebody's nodding. I'll take that as an affirmative. Yeah. So, uh, there has been a focus on rental housing inspections. Will you change the city department to assure inspection of 100% of rental units? End of question. Uh, I will, uh, I'll start, um, I'll start with Mr. Uh, Farah, if you want to.
Uh, yeah. I mean, I, I mean, I don't think 70% is enough. I think, uh, there's a lot of renters, there are a lot of renters within Ward Nine.
That was my, I'm sorry. My, I was unclear. 70% is the number of, the percentage of people in Ward Nine who are renters. That wasn't, I actually don't know what the current inspection rate is right now.
Which is a huge population in Ward Nine.
Right, yes.
And so I, that's why definitely I would, uh, consider making that happen to 100%.
Okay. Um, does anybody disagree with that? Would everybody support this idea of 100% rental inspections? I'm seeing a nod.
Well, I, I think, uh, what has become of issue in the last couple of years is, uh, and I, I got to call them out, the Steve Friend's apartment buildings that are in the Corcoran neighborhood and scattered throughout South Minneapolis, uh, they have been rewarded the highest quality rating by the city of Minneapolis. Uh, they have been labeled tier-one housing, which means they are inspected the least and the least often. In that when an inspector goes into the building, uh, the landlord shows them which unit should be inspected and doesn't give access to the rest. Now, uh, I can't speak exactly as to why city hall thinks that Steve Friend's buildings are the best. Everything I hear and from what I've seen when I'm in those buildings, they are the worst. They are the absolute worst. So I think the worst buildings that have the most violations should be inspected the most, but the vast majority of landlords in the city of Minneapolis provide high-quality housing that is naturally occurring and affordable. And, uh, we don't need to micromanage going through every single one of their units every year, but if we put the resources where they're needed on the worst players and we don't give them a pat, the worst players a pat on the back and a medal, uh, then we can focus our city limited inspections priorities where they need to be. And I think we should put an absolute priority on getting rid of the slum lords.
So that sounds like a, a slight shift from the, as opposed to just 100% across the board. It's, uh, less maybe for folks who, uh, have a good track record?
Absolutely.
More on folks who have been past offenders?
Correct.
Um, there's been other questions we've gotten about, before this, about, uh, increasing the amount of, uh, housing in Ward Nine. I'm wondering, uh, what you all, uh, I'm interested in all of your thoughts on, uh, whether Ward Nine needs more housing? If so, where? And what you feel about the idea of this wonderful term that everyone has come to learn and love this election cycle, upzoning, uh, through, uh, throughout, um, Ward Nine? So, um, you were nodding, uh, Mr. Farah, so I'll start with you just because you were nodding. I'm, so you're saying Ward Nine needs more housing? Uh, where? And how, what would you do sort of as a city council person to help increase the housing in Ward Nine?
Yeah. One of the things that we need in Ward, in Ward Nine is more affordable housing. And what's lacking right now is that partnership between bringing more developers to Ward Nine, um, in order to build more affordable housing. Uh, I mean, we haven't built more affordable housing since I can remember and, and that's because we've, this is one of the issues that we have been neglecting at the city hall. And so one of the things that I'm hoping to do if elected is again, bringing resources not only from city, but all the way from federal, but also bringing developers who are interested to come into Ward Nine and creating that partnership to build more affordable housing, uh, within our neighborhoods.
So, uh, when you say we, we haven't been doing So when you say we haven't been doing enough... So Mayor Hodges just released her budget, and I believe that the numbers are that there's another $24 million being put... $24 million being put into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Are you saying that's not enough? Or that the way that it works needs to happen differently?
Well, if you look at affordable housing in Minneapolis, it has been going to other wards. Specifically, my priority is Ward 9. So my priority would be, how do we bring more resources and more developers specifically to Ward 9? There has been a lot of developers that are shifting to other wards because... And the reason for that is because they're not having dialogue, communication with our city council member. And so I would definitely open that window of dialogue if elected.
Are there places in Ward 9 that should be, to use this fun term, upzoned, allow more density, higher buildings, that currently are zoned for single-family or duplexes in Ward 9?
There's potential locations within Ward 9. Hayawatha being just an example of that, Hayawatha Avenue.
Are there any places that should be sort of off-limits to that idea that you want to preserve the neighborhood character and not upzone them?
Yes. There are various different locations. And again, this would be not only my decision, but it would be a discussion between my office and the residents as well.
And so... And I know I'm going back and forth with you a lot here. But this is Ward 9. We really should be looking at developing further, adding a bunch more housing.
There are potential places on East Lake Street that we can develop. I mean, I don't want to develop a location, for example, you know, 33rd and Chicago, where you have mostly old houses. I don't want to build a 90, you know, floor building there unless the residents wants to see that.
Is anybody looking at a 90 floor?
Again, it would be... There are potential locations for opportunities, but that would be depending on the discussions between my office and the residents.
Okay. I'll go, Gary Schiff. Same... There was a lot of different questions, but let's just sort of start at the beginning. If Ward 9 needs more affordable housing, how do you start to make that happen as a council member?
Sure. Well, council members have a really unique role to play in developing affordable housing in their community. The current situation, 0% vacancy right now in our neighborhoods. The city subsidized affordable housing buildings are completely rented. And what that does, when the population is growing, is it makes everybody a victim of rent hikes. It puts every family at risk. If we can't keep growing our city's housing supply to match our population growth, then we end up with very high rents, and we end up with increased homelessness. You mentioned the money that the mayor is putting towards the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and I welcome that. But specifically, Tane, in the last four years in the 9th Ward, there hasn't been a single dollar allocated from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund into the 9th Ward. And that's a problem. There are no projects in the planning stages. There is nothing under construction. There is nothing breaking ground. So we need a council member who will work to partner on land assembly, on putting together the financing, and on working to make sure that we are constantly adding to our supply of affordable housing so that we can meet the needs of the next wave of immigrants, the next group of workers, and even the next generation that may not choose to live in a single-family house. I talk to seniors every day at the door who ask me, "Is there any new senior housing coming? I love my neighborhood, but I don't like mowing the lawn."
What are the incentives, then, that Ward 9 isn't putting out the... Oh, this is so nice. The water break, everyone. I have never had that happen before. So... But the incentives, then, if you're thinking about that there is affordable housing going up in some places, not in Ward 9? Talking to developers, talking to the neighborhood is one thing. I've got to imagine that there are other levers that need to be pulled in order to start making some of that happen? No, it's just talking?
It really is. During my 12 years representing the 9th Ward, the 9th Ward added 549 new units of affordable housing. And 9th Ward was known for being one of the biggest producers of affordable housing in the entire city. It's connected to transit. We've got access to a great business climate on Lake Street. And these new populations, new housing, it helps our small business community as well.
And let me ask the... Let me do this whole back and forth I just did with Mohammed. And the idea of upzoning, of creating more density throughout the ward, are there places that you look at and you say, "This, we should be pursuing more density in this part of the ward"?
Absolutely.
Can you name some of those for us?
Yeah. Tane, we don't really... This is an uptown. We don't have zoning fights, per se, because 9th Ward is, you're going to find more mixed-use zoning. You're going to find a transit-oriented development environment. You're going to find neighborhoods like the Corcoran neighborhood that is begging, and it has been begging for years, to see new multifamily development along Lake Street and next to the light rail station. So the zoning maps have been updated. The opportunity is out there. And Lake Street, our bus corridors, Bloomington Avenue, Cedar Avenue, 35W, these are all areas where people want to live close to transit that would be possible.
I love this. Can we do a big round of applause for this amazing restaurant that is hosting us here? This is so nice. I did. I moderated a thing for the Chamber of Commerce. They didn't give everybody water. So I thank you very much, Chamber of Commerce, if anyone's here. So I want to come down to the end, Mr. Peterson. So same beginning of this question. How does Ward 9 need more affordable housing? And how do we make that happen?
First of all, you said $24 million is what the mayor approved?
The mayor has proposed $24 million to go into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Okay. But it's not been approved yet. Is this a tentative number?
That will... Yes. The budget's approved in December, I believe.
Okay. Well, that's a lot of money to play with. Wow. There's properties that can be... There's properties that can be, you know, throughout the whole 9th Ward, there's properties that can be taken down and put up new structures and made these properties into affordable housing. Yeah. The increase in population, we've got to keep up with the housing. I mean, we can't falter it. We can't let it... Go ahead.
No. I was going to ask. So then, I think the crux of the question, though, is, if you're a city council member, what do you feel as though your role, or the city's role, in increasing that affordable housing in the ward is? How do you try and make that happen?
Well, I think I'd have to look at the needs first, see if it does need to be increased.
Do you... I mean, do you think right now that the ward needs more affordable housing?
Yes. Maybe I'm contradicting myself. $24 million is what the mayor wants to approve. That's a lot of money. That's a lot of money to play with.
So do you think that's too much to put into Affordable Housing Trust Fund?
Well, that covers the whole Minneapolis area. I mean, north, south, east, and west and everything, so... The entire budget is what, $1.3 billion? The entire budget? Is that proposed on there?
I don't have that what this year's budget written down is, but that sounds about right. Let me ask, are there two candidates? So that same number, $24 million. Do you feel like that's high, low? If you were on the city, would you be pushing for more money going into the Affordable Trust Fund?
I'm more interested where that $24 million is going.
Yeah.
Because the history is that it has been going outside of Ward 9. So I'm interested in bringing... The more money that I can bring to Ward 9 for affordable housing, the better. So I don't think it's enough citywide, knowing the issue, but particularly in Ward 9, we do definitely need to allocate resources for affordable housing.
And I'll ask Gary Schiff.
Well, I'm not sure on the exact dollar amount that you quote, because I didn't read that high of a number. But some of the money that I think she's proposing is also to go towards rehabilitation of existing units, perhaps in partnership with Minneapolis Public Housing. And I think yet other funds is designated for our City of Lakes Land Trust, which helps them buy properties for long-term affordability. With the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, you can't throw tons of money all at once because the city of Minneapolis is usually just the first money in. When the city supports a project, then developers, mostly nonprofit, go to the county and to the state. They'll purchase tax credits. It's typically a three-to-five-year cycle to get the planning and the financing together. So $24 million sounds like a big amount, and it may be a little bit higher than we can spend in one year, given the capacity of the nonprofit affordable housing developers in our community. But with rehabs of existing units, and particularly with the need to remove lead from our public housing supply, I think that money is absolutely needed as an investment overall.
Okay. We've been doing about a minute and a half for each question. I'm wondering if we can do just a couple of sort of lightning round questions of about 30 seconds each, so that we can get to a couple last things. One thing, we haven't... You mentioned this idea of a multimodal Lake Street, which was very... Because I actually biked here on Lake Street. And right now, it's terrifying to bike on. So I'm wondering, when you think about multimodal Lake Street, does that mean a bike lane on Lake Street?
It does not mean a bike lane on Lake Street.
I'll just keep taking my life in my hands. Good. All right.
But it absolutely means an environment that's safe for bikes, that is safe for people and vehicles, and a place where buses and transit all intermix and where we make sure that we're prioritizing the safety of pedestrians above all other modes.
Okay. I figured that was the answer for that one. But I am curious, more generally, over the last few years, we've seen some new bike lanes through Ward 9. I'm wondering, as you're looking forward to the development of the ward and with Minneapolis having adopted a complete streets plan, where do you see sort of the opportunities for future development? Is there new, say, bicycle pedestrian infrastructure that you want to see in Ward 9? Or do you feel like it's gone far enough at this point? And since I just picked on Mr. Schiff, I'll start in the middle with Mr. Farah.
Yeah. So I'm for bikes. But at the same time, I've talked to a lot of my residents where there are a lot of... One of the decisions that I really don't like that has been made at the city hall is that, you know, we tend to make decisions where bikes go without the input of the residents. And so one of the things that I'm hoping to do is, if I'm interested in putting a bike lane anywhere, I have to have a discussion with the people that live in that neighborhood. And there are a lot of places that we've placed bikes without the consideration of those neighborhoods. And so, yes, there are opportunities. But at the same time, I don't want to hurt the safety of the residents and the safety of the bikers at the same time. And so we need to have a discussion with business owners, with a lot of stakeholders on the table, especially residents, 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 which we are lacking right now.
Can I just ask you to, again, I know we're doing lightning round, but a specific where you feel like a project has happened and it's been at the detriment of the bikers that's hurt their safety potentially because there hasn't been the conversation?
There are bikes on... There's a bike lane on 26th. And a lot of the residents have not had a discussion with any of the city folks when they were doing that. And so one of the things that we need to do, one of the things that I'm interested in doing is if I see an opportunity where we are able to make a bike lane, we need to have a discussion with residents. And if it's not safe for them, if based on their inputs, that will be my decision. And so there, you know, so that... We need to have that dialogue. And right now, what's happening is we're just making decisions for the residents, thinking that it's good for them. And definitely, the way that it has been going, it is not as been good. It's not been good for them.
Okay. I'll come down to Mr. Peterson down here.
Okay. As long as it doesn't slow down commerce, all these bike lanes, and prevent parking and businesses.
Only in your imagination.
There was some talk about putting a bike lane on 38th Street down here. Between Cedar and Nickland, there's over 20 businesses that depend on off-street parking. And there was talk about putting bike lanes down there. On the east side of the Viking Stadium, there's two... That's where commerce goes. That's where streets intersect. They've got two bike lanes down there. I mean, come on. It's gotten a little bit overboard.
So you're saying no more future ones? Or I'm just trying to figure out where?
I don't agree with any more new bike lanes, no.
All right. Mr. Schiff, is there anywhere that you would see a future for bicycles, bike lanes in the 9th Ward?
You know, the city has an advisory committee called the Bicycle Advisory Committee that has a long-term plan for where the future bike routes are going to be. But it's very clear when talking to residents in Phillips, particularly with the experience of 26th and 28th Street, that they were not involved and were not aware that these plans were made years and years before the bike lanes ever went in. And not only that, when they first went in, they went in with a concrete barrier that City Hall just ripped up a year later when they decided it wasn't working out. And part of the confusion for everybody is that there's no standard for bike lanes throughout the city. It seems to be a different standard in every neighborhood, which causes confusion for everybody. We saw what happened on First Avenue downtown when the city attempted a four-block bike lane where the bikes were in between the parked cars and the curbs. And it was just on those four blocks. It was nowhere else. And then we see gorgeous examples on Lyndale and on Washington Avenue where the bikes are actually up above the street, next to the sidewalk, completely separated from the traffic. That looks fantastic. I'd like to see more consistency in our planning, and I'd like to see much more coordination with neighborhood organizations.
So anywhere in Ward 9? The... I mean, it sounds like you might know actually the long-term plan. Any places that were created years and years and years ago that we should know about now?
The biggest thing has been conversations about connecting our parks to our schools for safe routes for kids. But our best opportunity comes when a road is reconstructed. And 9th Ward has been through its share of road reconstructions. So we've been through Lake Street. We've been through Minnehaha Avenue. We've been through 27th Avenue. The next best conversation is going to happen when a major arterial is under construction.
All right. I did a horrible job of making that a lightning round. So I'll try better with this one. Should Minneapolis become a truly... And that was... That's underscored. Should Minneapolis become a truly zero-waste city? If so, how do you get to be a zero-waste city? I will start with Mr. Schiff.
Yes, we should. And what the end goal should be is to shut down the Hennepin County burner that currently is the recipient of trash that we all generate. I'm guilty. And it goes into the air eventually. And it lands on low-income populations in North Minneapolis, where it contributes to asthma rates in low-income kids. So we have to reduce our burning, and we have to do that by reducing the waste stream. And that means increasing composting, increasing recycling, and educating consumers that the decision they make on the shelf may affect the lungs of their neighbors.
So let me go down the line. Mohammed?
Yes, I do.
Yes? How? I think that's probably the bigger part of the question.
And again, it's going to take more than the city council. You have to bring partners. You have to bring the county. You have to bring stakeholders, waste companies, on board to make sure that plan moves forward.
Mr. Peterson.
Boy, realistically, think about it. How can you have zero waste? I mean, how? Maybe it's possible. That's a good question. I don't think it's possible. You're always going to have waste, to some degree. We got our recycling. We got our organics going through. We got our regular garbage going through. I think we're doing a pretty good job as it is right now.
All right. There was a follow-up to this, which, very well... Do you support a fee on plastic bags or a bring-your-own-bag ordinance?
No fee. No fee.
Bring your own bag.
What?
Bring your own bag.
Bring your own bag. Do you think that the city should have a policy that either incentivizes or disincentivizes people?
I think we should incentivize it, but... You know, I need to look into that how. But I think I do believe... You know, I, I need to look into that how, but I think, I do believe, I'm not sure about the fee, but I do encourage, we need to encourage residents to bring their own, their own bags.
Gary Schiff.
I do support regulating plastic bags, particularly because plastics are now showing up in our drinking water supply. And yes, Minneapolis drinking water supply has microfibers of plastic that we all ingest every time we drink tap water. To get at this problem, we must reduce plastic bags. The government, the nation of Kenya has banned them across the entire country. I like my grocery store where I go to, at Aldi, where you have to pay a 10-cent fee, but I want the stores to keep the fee. This should not be more money for government. This is just sending the message to consumers that nothing is free in our society. You pay one way or the other. So, think before you take another plastic bag and just throw it into the waste stream.
So, just to put a pin on that, that's a yes for a bag fee, but it would go to the stores?
Stores, yep. And it would basically say a store can't give away a plastic bag, they can only charge a small amount for it.
All right. Well, that is a lot of stuff. What we promised to spend the last bit of this doing was giving each of the candidates an opportunity to do a closing statement at about, giving them each two minutes here. So, I will do the opposite of what I did last time, we started over here and went that way. So, this time, I will start all the way down at that end. Mr. Peterson, take it away. Thank you so much for spending the time with us, your closing statement.
Thank you, thank you for coming. What I would do, what I would like to see, being a city councilman, I've never owned any kind of an office before, anything. It'd be, it'd be totally learning experience. Gary Schiff, he's educating me a lot here tonight. I mean, holy cow. Thank you. And, yeah.
I hope the Lord will.
I hope so too. It's, it's, it comes down to common sense. Comes down to common sense. The plastic bag thing, come on, it's, it's common sense stuff. It's, it's, it's another fee, the city just wants to raise your taxes, right? Easy to see. No, it's, it's just common sense. We got to accommodate a lot of people. We got to, we got to see the city grow, as simple as that. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Yes, please, round of applause, this is the time to do it. All right, we, we'll come down middle here, Mohammed Farah.
Yes, again, thank you so much for having us today, my friends, my neighbors. The next four years is going to be very vital, and we have one way of going out of the issues that is before us. A lot of things went south over the last couple of years. The more I talk to my residents, the more I hear the cry for leadership, the cry for someone to come in and build relationship, build trust, and really care about the issues right here within Ward 9. It's about that time, we have a chance on November 7th to set things right. I want to set a new direction and a new vision with you in mind. I am hoping to do that with you all. And thank you so much, I will be around. Please come and ask me any comment, any questions or comments or concerns that you may have. So, thank you again.
Thank you very much, big round of applause. And Gary Schiff.
Thank you, Tane, for moderating tonight, and thanks to everybody who came and listened to what we have to say. I want to be honest, I didn't think I'd be running for city council again. But I didn't think I would have a city, when I stepped aside four years ago and when I cast my vote for Councilmember Kano, I never imagined that we'd be where we are today. I didn't imagine we'd have a council member who would block affordable housing. I didn't imagine that we would have a council member who wouldn't show up at a debate. But when I look at this room, I know that the people here today have put their hearts and their hard work into this community. And we have come so far from the 90s, which many of us remember as being some of the toughest times in the Phillips community. But I see Mike, and I think of the contributions that he's made, working to encourage economic development in the American Indian community and help create new homes. I see Greg, who's volunteered at Heart of the Beast and had to suddenly fathom how to keep patrons safe just walking from the parking lot to the front door. I see Mark, who comes to his business every morning on Bloomington Avenue and has to relocate 20 people who have camped out in his parking lot overnight. These are tough things for all of us to confront. But I know that as a community, I have hope because we've done it before, and we're going to be able to do it again. We're going to be able to come together, find the resources, cooperate, listen to one another, and prove to everyone that the 9th Ward is a ward that welcomes everybody. 9th Ward is a ward where families get the opportunity to raise a kid in a, in a smart, safe environment. And I'm committed to working with all of you to make sure that that happens again. So, thank you for being here tonight, and thank you for all you do.
Thank you. I'm going to turn the mic back over. One thing I forgot to mention though, which is, this is a good place to do it, you all hopefully know that we live in Minneapolis, that's part one. Part two is that that means you have ranked choice voting, which means that you actually get to choose your top three candidates. If you have any questions about that, we have two fantastic volunteers over here who will answer any questions you have about that.
Neighborhood Association, and I want you to meet my co-chair, Abdul. And Abdul's got a presentation to make.
Hi, everyone, thank you for coming tonight. I'm here to present Quiruh Lo, certificate of appreciation for having us here tonight to do, free for us to come together. So, I would like to give a beautiful present.